All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District August 17th Board Meeting. I'm AESD Board President Juan Gieber Alvarez and I call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Any member... Oh, sorry. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera: llame al 470-485-8994. Cuando se le pida, presione el PIN or la clave, 106102470 y la tecla numeral. Any member of the public has an opportunity to address the board in person during the Agendized Public Comment Sessions, or they may choose to submit their public comments online by 12 PM or in person by 6:30 PM today. Comments submitted online will be read during the appropriate Agendized Public session. Let's begin with the Board Roll Call. To my right, we have Board Member Mark Lopez.
Present.
Now here with us today is Dr. Paulo McGallas. Next, we have Ryan Ruelis.
Present.
We have Board Clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Here.
And then Board President Juan Alvarez. Item 1B, the public speakers for closed session agenda items. I believe we have none, right? And item two, let's move to adjournment to closed session. Can I have a motion?
So moved, Ruelis.
Have a motion, Ruelis. Second, was that Mark? Lopez? All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of moving to adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Okay, motion carries. Let's adjourn to closed session.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District August 17th Board Meeting. I am AESD Board President Juan Gabriel Alvarez and I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available to attendees. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al cuatro siete cero cuatro ocho cinco ocho nueve nueve cuatro. Cuando se le pida presiona el pino, la clave, uno cero seis, uno cero dos, cuatro siete cero y la tecla numeral. Let's begin with our flag salute. Uh, Dr. Downing, would you list?
Hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Thank you, Dr. Downing. Let's move on to introductions and roll calls. Starting to my right, we have Board Member Mark A. Lopez.
Present. Good evening, everyone.
Uh, Dr. Paulo McCallis could not join us today and will not be present this evening. Next, we have Board Member Ryan A. Ruelles.
Hello.
We have Board Clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Hello, everyone.
I'm Juan Gabriel Alvarez. Then to my left, we have Dr. Christopher Downing, our superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
And Dr. Mary Grace, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Good evening.
Deana Meland, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening.
Jesse Chavaria, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
Good evening, everyone.
Tracy Golden, to my right, Senior Director of School Safety and Operations.
Good evening, everyone.
Yesenia Ureño, Senior Administrative Assistant.
Good evening.
To the back, we have Alina Abelarroque and Yasmin Anaya, our interpreters. And then we have Janice Cato in the room as well, our Technology Support Technician. Uh, to the back in the booth, we have Brian Brooks and Benjamin Hausman, our Media Production Specialists. Alright, so moving on to Report of Closed Session Items Taken. There were none. Uh, next, let's move on to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, Ruelles. Second, Lopez. Any discussion on the agenda? Alright, all in favor of approving the agenda? My words are getting crossed today. I'm so sorry. Okay, all in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries for O. Okay, let's move on to Special Order of Business. Uh, Report of Final Sale of Measured G Bond Issue. Jin Kim, Piper Sandler and Company, and Jesse Chavaria, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
As the board recalls, this summer, we went out to sell thirty million of Measured G Bonds. This evening, we have Jin Kim from Piper Sandler and Company, who are bond advisors to the district. He will do a short presentation for you regarding the final sale of those bonds. I'll turn it over to Jin.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. My name is Jin Kim and I am here on behalf-
My name is Jin Kim and I am here on behalf of Piper Sandler. So tonight, I have a handful of slides which I'd like to go over with you. And the main purpose of these slides are to briefly summarize the successful Measured G Series 2002 General Obligation Bond Sale, which we had about six weeks ago in June. So I'd like to start with this Slide 1. There are a couple of ingredients that are involved and come together to achieve a successful bond sale. And one of those ingredients is the timing of the actual sale of the bonds and determining that sale date. We would want to avoid any days in which there might be some negative economic news, such as news about 10% inflation or news about the Federal Reserve Board announcing large interest rate hikes. And in order to do that and determine which date might be the most favorable for us, we looked at the economic calendar and we set on a July 28th as our sale date in hopes that that is the date in which there might be the least amount of economic news which would influence interest rates negatively for us. And this chart here shows that when we look back, and look back at the dates leading up to our bond sale and the interest rates on our bond sale, our plan worked because we were able to take advantage of a temporary dip in interest rates and sold our bonds at a lower rate than what might have been possible had we sold our bonds a week or two before our planned June 28th date. The other ingredient that comes together to form a successful bond sale is obtaining the right credit rating. After working with district staff and the bond financing team, we decided to obtain a credit rating from Standard and Poor's, and that is a nationally recognized credit rating agency for bonds. In the days leading up to the meeting with the Standard and Poor's, we worked with the district team and bond council to formulate the right strategy, the right note, and the right story to share with the credit rating analysts. And I might add, the district was very well represented by Dr. Downing and Mr. Chavaria, as well as President Alvarez, in sharing that right story with the analysts. And we were able to maintain our high credit rating of AA-. And just as a point of reference, a AA- credit rating is full notch higher than the credit ratings of a typical California school district. And lastly, on this slide, I'd like to just point out some of the key highlights reported and noted in the credit rating analyst's report. Proactive management that has stabilized the district's finances. This is a nod to the district's finance team. Another nod to the district's finance team is the maintenance of a very strong financial position. And lastly, a strong and diverse local economy with many employment opportunities. I know that was a point that President Alvarez noted during our meetings. So, let me skip over this third slide and come back to it and move on to Slide 4. The combination of the high credit rating and the determination of a right sale date. After that, those activities were completed. We invited financial services firms from around the country to submit bids to purchase the district's bonds. And at the conclusion of the bidding period at 9:30 AM that morning, we had received five bids. Some of the bids came from your household names like Wells Fargo. Another bid came from a Wall Street giant, Morgan Stanley. And the balance of the bids came from specialty regional firms like Fidelity and Mizurow. And after all the bids were tabulated, it was one of these regional firms that ended up submitting the best bid at the lowest interest rate, which is 4.35%. And another point of reference here I'd like to note is that for a planning tool that we used in planning for the Measured G Bonds, we were assuming a 4.5%. So this is slightly lower than what we had always been assuming. So this is a tribute to a successful bond sale. Another measurement of a successful competitive bond sale is that when we have more than three bids, that would be considered a successful bond sale. And we have five here. So, I have a few other slides that I'd like to briefly go over, and these are just the numerics behind our bonds. This slide just shows you that we were able to issue the full $30 million of bonds at the targeted 1998 tax rate. And we were able to achieve that at a repayment ratio of 2.2 to 1. And just as a reminder, this repayment ratio is calculated by taking the principal amount of bonds and adding the interest and dividing it by the principal. And the state of California set a maximum repayment ratio of 4 to 1. And any repayment ratio below that is a demonstration of good governance and good fiscal stewardship of public dollars. And the next two slides are further numerical details of the bond issue. Here, this slide just shows you that after selling the $30 million in bonds, the district will net about $29.5 million for new projects. What's interesting to note on this slide is if you look at the top section, you see the words "premium received." That is the amount of dollars that investors paid in excess of the $30 million of bonds we sold. And that is a demonstration of the high credit rating and how the investors really wanted to buy these Anaheim School District bonds. And the $1.8 million will be held at the county for the benefit for the taxpayers. So there'll be credit to the tax bills which will be sent to the community members. And I'd like to conclude with this last slide, which is just a breakout of all of the transaction costs. So, these are just some of the slides and information I wanted to share with you tonight about the successful Measured G Bond Sale. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
No questions. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to news and updates. Parent Leadership Group Updates. Looks like there are none. Association Updates, also none. Okay. District News and Updates, Communications and Public Information. There is a district news and update from Dr. Christopher Downing.
Thank you, Board President Alvarez. I would just like to share information about the start of the school year and some other good news for our district. If we can move to the next slide. Thank you, Janice. So, we wanted to start off by sharing with you back-to-school media coverage. And we were covered by all 10 major networks as well as print media. And they captured some of the great things happening in our district. They talked to many stakeholders in our district and it was a representation of some of our outstanding programs. Next slide, please. Uh, some of the focus was on our ELO program, our Dual Immersion, our addition of TK Classrooms, our doubling of counselors. They captured Great Music Program that our district is very proud of. And there was a full-page feature on La Opinión, multiple morning drive coverages on KNX, photos of the day from OC Register. Uh, the LA Times, AP also picked up our story and they interviewed, again, board members, administrators, and staff, teachers, students, and parents. And again, it showcased some of the great things happening in our district as we started this school year. Next, please. Uh, again, these are just some of the pictures and we want to thank Board President Alvarez for his great interview. Thank you. Next. And, um, as part of the story and what was formerly on our district website, uh, for a long time has been that we are the second-largest elementary district in the state of California. Well, uh, one of the reporters wanted us to verify that. So, in verifying that information, uh, we discovered that at this time, we are the largest elementary school district in California. So, we're very proud of that. And as you can see, we have almost 3,000 students more than the second-largest. Alright, next. Uh, something else that we're very proud of is a recent notification, and actually, the board will be approving the receipt of this grant funding. And each of the schools listed, Edison, Gwen, Henry, Loera, Ponderosa, Ross, and Sunkist, they're going to get grants of about $22,000 of value. And it will include pianos, acoustic guitars, orf instruments, whirled drums, recorders, handheld percussion, boom whackers, which are always a favorite, a classroom set of ukuleles, method books, and also program support for 10 years. So we are very thankful, again, to Save the Music for continuing to provide this valued resource to our district and to support our music program. Next, uh, we wanted to share information about one of our most engaged parents. Childcare Aware of America created a committee of parent leaders across the United States. After hundreds of applications, only 12 parents were chosen, uh, including one of first-five Orange Counties Family Ambassadors, Maritza Bermudez. And she is the only parent representing California. So congratulations on your selection, Maritza. Next. Janice, thank you. Alright. And that concludes our news and updates. And again, uh, thanks to all of our outstanding staff members who truly welcomed students back, um, celebrated them with red carpets and balloons and did our very best to return to some of the traditions that we hold so dear and just experiences that we had before the pandemic that we're able to, again, implement. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Downing. Okay, moving on to public speakers. Speakers on agenda or non-agenda items. We have one speaker today. We have David Lopez. Uh, Mr. Lopez, if you want to come up to the podium up here. Alright, Mr. Lopez, you have, uh, three minutes to speak. Alright, when you have one minute left, uh, Court Clerk Philbeck will hold up a yellow card and when your time's up, she'll hold up the red. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Lopez. I'm a retired law enforcement officer, work with Anaheim Police Department. I'm a retired high school teacher. I've worked at Western High School. Uh, my wife is also a retired college professor. Some of you might have known her, Zada Lopez. Uh, my son is in the audience, a social worker. Uh, also, I'm a proud United States Marine. Uh, I have been a resident of Anaheim for 47 years, 92801. Recently, my grandson, my heart and soul, started at John Marshall in the Dual Immersion Program. And so far, keeping my fingers crossed, he seems to be doing pretty well. I'm the one that's concerned. Um, I'm concerned about several things. Number one, bullying. That is a real issue in schools today. The second is cyberbullying. The third, school shootings. And I'll tell you why I'm so concerned about that. Uh, by the way, my son just told me that John Marshall had a lockdown today. Uh, I don't know the circumstances, but my son got a text from the principal. I'm really concerned that we need to put our efforts into making sure that the kids are safe. Currently, I'm an advisor to Anaheim Police Department. I'm also an advisor through the Infra Guard Program to the FBI on criminal justice issues. My son and I also have applied under the Tier 2 Program to become volunteers at John Marshall Elementary. So, the reason I'm up here is because I do have a concern. I know there are a lot of things going on that might not be in your purview, but I get briefings every day from the FBI and there are things out there that we have to deal with. And so far, we can keep it away from the public as best we can, but the bottom line is, I'm really concerned about the kids and I'm going to do everything I can, so is my son, to make sure that the kids are safe. Um, thank you for your time. Are there any questions that I may answer? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Okay, let's go on to the Superintendent's Report. AESD Start of School Update. Start of School Update, Tracy Golden, Senior Director of School Safety and Operations.
Okay, good evening, members of the board. Um, I'm here to just give you a very brief update of our start of school from a safety perspective. So, I'm going to start with, um, our COVID safety plan. It's been updated and uploaded to our, um, site. And really, it's not much different than where we left off in June. So much of the guidance is the same, but we are always watching the California Department of Public Health and making sure that we are in line with their guidance and their, um, mandates. Uh, so, right now, masks are optional. However, they're highly recommended. Um, there's no minimum physical distancing requirements. Um, the managing of positive COVID-19 cases continues to have notifications to both students and staff. Uh, we do have the dashboard up on our, um, district website to, uh, to report all the cases. And, um, we are asking all our students and staff to self-screen for COVID symptoms before they come to school. And then we will, uh, and continue to promote good hand hygiene and all of our disinfection protocols that we have in place. The public health order that requires all school workers to be vaccinated or tested weekly is still in effect. So, we will continue our testing program. We send testers out to the school sites to, uh, test at least once a week. And then we also have testing still available at Key on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays for all Anaheim Elementary staff and students. The state is now recommending for schools to use the antigen tests rather than a PCR test. And they have also included a program where we can get over-the-counter tests or at-home tests, uh, for free, and then we can pass them out to our staff and students. So, we will be doing that. We've already sent one, um, batch out at the beginning of school, but we do that on a monthly basis and make sure that everybody has the test so they can, you know, test themselves if they have symptoms before coming to school. Um, and we will be doing that, uh, like I said, on a monthly basis until, um, the guidelines change or if there's something different that comes up. And then I just want to finish with some of the general safety protocols that we have in school. Much of what we do around safety is about being proactive and being prepared. So, before the pandemic, we had started with, um, active threat training at our schools and we got through about half of them before we were, um, going to distance learning and had to shut down. So, we've brought those back and we're starting them up again. So, it'll be the, um, other schools that didn't get the training, including going back to the schools that had the training before the, um, pandemic and catching any new employees that maybe didn't get to do it that time. All of our schools are single-point-of-entry. We use Raptor to screen in all our visitors. We have a volunteer screening program now that involves, um, not only background checks but also a, um, application process. We have emergency response procedures that our schools review every year and constantly revise and make sure that everybody is, uh, properly trained and that they practice a lot. Uh, every one of our sites has a safety committee that meets four times a year to review any safety protocols or any, um, concerns from the, uh, public or from staff about what's going on at their school site. And then we are also practicing drills on a regular basis to make sure that everybody at the school site knows exactly what to do in an emergency. And that's it. Is there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Alright, moving on to, uh, Community Schools Program Grant Update. Dr. Yadira Moreno, Director of School, Family, and Community Engagement. Dr. Vidal Valdez, Ponderosa School Principal. And Wendy Sales, Paul Revere School Principal.
Good evening.
Hi.
Board President Alvarez and Board Members. I also have Yesenia Navarro with me, Curriculum Specialist of Parent Engagement. Uh, we want to, uh, begin by sharing, oh, I have this here, I apologize, that we have received $2.8 million for, uh, our Implementation Grant of Community Schools. Uh, it funded July 1st and this is, uh, this money, the money will be, uh, used across five years. Two of our schools will be part of this grant implementation process. Uh, Paul Revere and Ponderosa Elementary. So what is a community school? And in reality, a community school is just a, uh, school that works with the entire community so that we are capturing the whole child with the goal of student learning, creating stronger families, and a healthier community overall. We have four pillars of community schools. We have integrated student supports, family and community engagement, collaborative leadership and practices for educators and administrators, and expanded learning times and opportunities for our students. and expanded learning times and opportunities for our students. The cornerstones and commitments through these community schools are an asset-driven, strength-based practices where it really has that focus of we're stronger together, racially just and restorative school climates, where we're not focused on punitive practices, culturally proficient and relevant instruction, and shared decision-making, shared decision-making by all the stakeholders. Yesenia will guide us through the implementation process.
Thank you, Dr. Moreno. The Chirons Bureau is in coordinating partnership with Anaheim Elementary School District, and through that process, they will hire one community school coordinator and two family support counselors, volunteer coordinators. Anaheim Elementary School District will then implement a site implementation committee that will be at Revere and Ponderosa, one at each community schools, and also an A S D Community Schools Steering Committee, which is for the district. We hope to have those started for the school sites once the Chirons Bureau has hired their positions, so we can implement that hoping by October, and also within our district by December of this year. The implementation process will also continue in collaborations with amazing community partners such as Network Anaheim's, Big Brother, Big Sisters, Western Youth Services, and Orange County United Way. And now I'm going to introduce you to our amazing principals, Ms. Wendy Sales and Dr. Vidal Valdez, who will talk a little more about their school site.
Hello, good evening. So over at Revere School, we've been really fortunate to have been part of United Way's Impact Hub, a community hub that we already have and that we have started. So we've been able to see the benefits of what happens when we not only take care of our students, but our families as well. So with this grant, we're really looking forward to being able to form an implementation committee, really listen to the needs of our community, and provide more wraparound supports. So thank you for your consideration of it.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Downing, Cabinet. We're really excited here. So on behalf of the Ponderosa team, we really want to thank you for looking at Ponderosa to becoming a community school. I know that it's a process, the implementation process with the support. Ponderosa is ready. They've been ready, and we're excited to see the implementation process, new partnerships with our community, and really looking forward to bringing on and hearing those voices, those students, those parents, and really integrate them so we can support. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Now, in conclusion, we're really excited in regards to the Schools, Family, and Community Engagement Office in partnership with Network Anaheim and continuing our collaboration with our amazing community partners. We're here to answer any questions you might have.
Could you just define the volunteer coordinator a little bit? Like how your, what your process is for that, or what pool that's in, or how you're choosing?
We're working with the Children's Bureau. We will be partnering with them. They will be hiring the three, the three employees, but we, our principals will be part of the hiring committee in order to ensure that we find the person that is going to be perfect to lead our schools in this wraparound service.
Okay, so maybe, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. The volunteer, so that person is the volunteer coordinator? It's not that there's going to be two volunteer coordinators? The family support counselor slash is the volunteer coordinator?
Correct. And there's two, because one will be for Ponderosa and one will be for Revere.
Okay, clarification, thank you.
Yeah, so essentially, the community schools coordinator is in charge of overseeing the programming, and then we have a person at each site to then support the sites.
Yes.
I just have a logistical question, like, you know, since basically, you know, the community schools and whatnot are there for families and students and have wraparound services, et cetera, how are we going to stagger more or less kind of people's, like, hours, I guess, to make sure that we're always going to have an administrator or somebody in charge there at our school sites, considering we are liable?
I think that's going to be part of the implementation committees, the conversations that we're going to have in order to ensure that our communities, our schools becoming school hubs, are, there's an administrator present for any type of event. So I think that will naturally develop from the conversations and ensuring that we're capturing everyone's voice, which is really the goal of a community school.
Thank you.
Sure. I have a suggestion, and you might be working on it already because you're all proactive anyway, but is there any way we can put out a campaign for educating our families and our community stakeholders in any way on what a community school looks like? What it's going to be about as best as you can? Because you know, I know the committee is going to discover what they're going to be doing to provide services, because those don't exist yet. But just overall education to the community so that they know, hey, these are coming, and this is what it potentially could be about. And so does it just show up, and they're like, what's happening? I don't understand, kind of thing?
No, I think that's wonderful feedback, and we briefly discussed that when we met as a team under the guidance of Dr. Downing and Dr. Grace, and Wendy Dallin is a huge part of this. And really, it was as we start to look for or have the conversations with our parents and having them join our committee, how do we share what a community school is? So we're right on board with you and looking for ways to communicate that through, through the support of the principals.
Great, thank you.
Now that I know that, understand the family support counselor is actually also the volunteer coordinator, what are the volunteers? What are we going to have for them? What are they going to do for us? Well, how are we?
And that really will come from the implementation committees. And, yeah, and the steering committee for the district, because really, the volunteers are all these partnerships with our community that are coming. Revere is a great example of like Spark Plug and United Way. We saw one of our last June board meetings. We saw United Way kind of with the mural and what they did for Revere. So the, they will be coordinating the efforts of all the volunteers of the organizations that will be present on the campuses in order to provide great opportunities for our students.
So we'll hear more about that as we go along and later on, actually, what has come to fruition on this. Thank you.
And then correct me if I'm wrong, but just, I think it'll help clarify maybe for Board Clerk Philbeck. The idea is that you go back to your community space, you engage with them, and you figure out the needs of your community. So there's no way to know the programming, because we don't know the needs yet, right? Is that correct?
Correct, correct. That'll be naturally, I mean, we do that just in general. We're always doing needs assessments through our other parent leadership groups, but it's really starting again from ground zero and saying, where do we want this to go?
And that kind of just, you know, leads into my comment that I wanted to say when you were talking about the volunteers and, you know, my question about like the administrators and everything like that. I love the fact that basically you're bringing it back to the idea and concept behind community schools overall. It's not a one-size-fits-all. Each community is different. Ponderosa, Revere vastly different from one another, so what may work at one area may not work at another. And that's what's beautiful about this whole kind of setup and the whole model. And I just want to applaud you and your team for truly doing this in the community schools model and really having feedback from the community that it serves. So kudos to all of you.
Yeah, we're excited. I mean, Dr. Valdez and Principal Sales are integral part of those two communities, and through the School, Family, and Community Engagement Office, we'll make sure that we give them the support that they need in order to be successful.
All right, we're good? All right, thank you so much. We appreciate your work. All right, just so everybody knows, the presentations that we showed today on our screens will be available on our district website under the tab Board of Education by Tomorrow. All right, let's move on to Consent Calendar. Items listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the board in one motion. There is no discussion of these items unless a member of the board staff or the public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Are there any items that you would like to be pulled at this time, board members? Okay. Seeing as there are no items to be pulled, can I get a motion to ratify the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay, motion, Relis?
Second.
Second, Philbeck? Okay. Okay, any discussion on the consent calendar? All right, all in favor of ratifying the consent calendar, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, abstentions? All right, motion carries four zero. All right, let's move on to the Action Calendar. Superintendent's office. It is requested the Board of Education consider nominating board members from the California School Boards Association, member district, or county office of education to serve as Director-at-Large for Asian/Pacific Islander and Hispanic. Do you have a motion to discuss?
I'll move the item.
Okay, motion Lopez, I'll second it, second Alvarez. So it looks like they're looking for a specific ethnicity of makeup of board member to be nominated, or is it anyone? I'm not sure how this works. Can you clarify?
It can be anyone, but this would be the area that would be served. And I know that, I believe we've had a board member participate in the past.
Sure. Let's open it up with, is anyone interested? I think it'd be interested, okay? I guess, can you nominate yourself? I'll nominate myself.
And I second that nomination.
A nomination from Alvarez and a second from Relis. Any discussion on me being the CSBA member, Director-at-Large, Asian, Pacific Islander, and Hispanic?
You'll do a great job.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
And I'm assuming that's for Hispanic?
Yeah, I actually prefer Latino, but, yeah.
There you go, Latino.
That's my preference. Okay, so no other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries four zero. It is recommended the Board of Education receive for first reading revisions to the following board policies and administrative regulations. A, E1-
So moved, Relis.
Okay. Motion, Relis?
Second, Lopez.
Second, Lopez. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, I say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries four zero. Move on to Educational Services. It is recommended the Board of Education approve Resolution Number 2022-23/05 instructional materials and officially certify that pupils in the schools will have during the 2022-23 school year sufficient textbooks and/or instructional materials consistent with the content and cycle of the curriculum frameworks adopted by the California Department of Education under Education Code 60119 and 33126. A public hearing for this item was held at the July 27, 2022 regular board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, Lopez, second, Relis. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries four zero. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt Resolution Number 2022-23/06 declaring the month of September as attendance awareness month.
Second.
I have a motion, Philbeck, second, Relis. Okay, any discussion? I'd just like to mention that maybe we should start thinking about looking at attendance as not something that we should be praising, especially if we're kind of promoting the kids come to school if they're sick, right? So I think we should be careful about that as we move forward. I know traditionally, attendance hasn't been a big thing in schools, but in the recent climate, I feel kind of iffy about that, but that's just my opinion. All right, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to oppose this one. Okay, any abstentions? Okay, motion carries three one. Okay, items C, SLPA, there are no items. Human Resources. It is recommended the Board of Education ratify and approve the appointment of applicant number 08172022-01 to the position of Curriculum Specialist for the Curriculum and Instruction Department working with the DLI Korean Program effective August 1, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Lopez?
Second.
Second, Relis, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries four zero. Dina?
Congratulations to Seong Kim. Ms. Kim began her employment with A E S D in 2019 and has worked at Thomas Jefferson School as a kindergarten Korean DLI teacher. Ms. Kim has already begun working in her new Curriculum Specialist position where she will be supporting the various aspects of the DLI Korean Program. Congratulations to Seong Kim.
Thank you. It is recommended the Board of Education ratify and approve the appointment of applicant number 08172022-02 and applicant number 08172022-03 to the position of Leadership Assistant effective July 1, 2022, at a site to be determined.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Relis, second, Lopez, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries four zero. Dina?
Congratulations to the following new E L O P Leadership Assistance who will provide support to multiple sites throughout the district, John Coney and Shannon Robinson. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, Administrative Services, there are none. Let's move on to Board Discussion. Board members, activities related to school business, starting with Trustee Lopez.
Thank you, President Alvarez. Want to start off by stating my first kind of back-from-summer event that I was able to attend. I was pleased to be at our new employee workshop at Roosevelt. Trustee Relis joined me. That was on July 28th, just right before the school year started, just to welcome some of our new employees, some of our employees who were transitioning to a different capacity to serve students. Very well attended. Cabinet was all there. I wanted to give a shout out to, we had a couple of vendors who donated breakfast as well. I can't remember the name of the vendor.
Panera?
It was APU University and Schools First.
Okay, great. Well, kudos to them. Thank you, Dina, for the assist. So that was great. It was a two-day event that just welcomed, kind of oriented all of our new employees. August 2nd, I attended National Night Out at Ponderosa with Dr. Valdez, who's here in the audience, and his assistant principals, vice principals, Lindsay Potencio Rhodes and Jessica Scott, who just joined the team over there. And Mr. Relis also joined that as well. On August 4th, I was able to participate in our Start Smart. I picked up my T-shirt, I was really excited. I was able to go up at James Gwin and just put some door hangers, get some fresh air, some exercise. So it was a great, great morning with the staff at Gwin. And then I attended an online meeting called It Takes All of Us Community Schools Arts and Culture Launch, which was the second year in a row that I had attended one of these events, and our very own Maritza Bermudas had helped to organize it. So it was very appropriate that, and I think very fitting, that she was honored in our earlier presentation. August 5th, I was, I attended another Start Smart. I couldn't, one day was not enough, so I did attend a second day of Start Smart again at Ponderosa Elementary. So Dr. Valdez was gracious enough to allow me to come back again a couple days later to help get the word out about the start of our school year. And then, third time's the charm, August 11th, I was able to attend, just stopped by real quick for our first day of school at Ponderosa. So Ms. Sales, don't worry, I'm going to make my way to Revere as well. So just a lot of time at Ponderosa recently. It was not planned to be that way, but I will be visiting some of our other sites as well. So rest assured. And with that, that will conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Lopez. Board Member Relis?
Well, Trustee Lopez, it sounds to me like you're looking for a job at Ponderosa or something from the way your board report reads. But yes, I definitely joined, Trustee Lopez and some of my other colleagues at a wide array of different events throughout the last few weeks. I would, first off, though, before we move on anywhere, I'd just like to first start off by wishing all of you, I hope all of you, students and families and teachers and classified staff and our amazing team here in the Anaheim Elementary School District and all you administrators, had a fantastic, fantastic return back to school. I'm super excited for this school year, and I hope all of you are as well. With that said, you know, I just want to just comment briefly on the whole issue of our bonds. Kudos, kudos, kudos to President Alvarez for basically doing your presentation there with Dr. Downing. Those are very exciting moments. I know that I can testify to that. Clerk Philbeck has also sold bonds before. So welcome to the team, and you're representing, and we're super pumped. And why shouldn't we be super pumped? Considering I feel so strongly with the bonds that we sell and us always holding true to what we tell our taxpayers. We're very transparent with the manner in which we sell our bonds and utilize our funding, and that alone is a team effort. And of course, I need to definitely give a shout out to our bond committee, which definitely does a large oversight and whatnot and holds us all true. Sunkist and Roosevelt and the construction of those two school sites are a clear testimony to the amazing things that- are a clear testimony to the amazing things that we are getting here with the selling of Measure G. Yes, I went and was able to make a cameo over at the new employee orientation, and they definitely had a delicious breakfast. Thank you for reminding me, Trustee Lopez. But it was exciting to watch the new employees here in our district as, you know, as well as to hear from our fantastic cabinet about the great and amazing things taking place here in A E S D. And as somebody that's a product of this district, it just gets me super pumped up and just really excited, and I'm just thrilled for all of the new opportunities that our new employees have as they enter into this district to work and this new chapter in their lives. On August 10th, I would like to give a shout out to Ms. Nichols and her team over at Edison, as well as some of our super-involved parents, Rosie, Maritza, the key players over in a lot of our schools for really organizing and really utilizing our school as a safe place where they basically went and met with the council member for that area to talk about safety, to talk about certain issues that significantly and directly impact our students there. That's what our schools are about, and that's why this whole presentation on community schools, this whole presentation on the selling of the bonds and what we can do with that money, it's so exciting because there's unlimited opportunities here, you know? And really, it's the community schools are putting our schools back into the center of the community where they should be. And with that said, I just would like to just give a shout out to the presentation on the community schools earlier. You know, I know that, you know, many of you are products of the Anaheim Elementary School District. Can you please raise your hand if you went to school here? Good, good, good. And I know, Ms. Sales, even though you didn't, you have a son that's in our district, so that's close enough. But, you know, I mean, it's about that, you know? And it's about really being from the community, a product of this community, believing in this community, sending your kids to this schools in our district, you know, and really putting our money where our mouth is when we say we're amazing. Yeah, we are. And all of you are a clear testimony of that. And, you know, I'm just very thankful for all the great work that you're doing. I'm super excited for this school year. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Board Member Relis. Clerk Philbeck?
Welcome back, everybody, and we're happy you're with us. We're looking forward to just an incredible year, an awesome year. And for the first time, I wasn't able to participate in any of the, before the school start, the school start or the walks. And that was very sad because I've always loved to do all that, but I wasn't able to go out to the schools. But I am going to make up for that very soon. And I was very proud of our district and all of those who were featured in the media and who presented us just so well. And I had people calling me from all over saying they had seen it, and it was just a really proud moment, I think, for all of us, for everyone to get to really see how awesome that we are and how many wonderful things are going on at our schools. So thanks to everybody that participated in that, and I will be back out there soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Clerk Philbeck. Just have a couple of things. August 11th, I got the pleasure of helping represent the team with the news, right? So we were at Sunkist really early in the morning, really a fun experience. One thing that I want to note is that the crews and the reporters were just in awe of Sunkist. It looked so beautiful under the lights, like, early in the morning, right? So they just kept mentioning what an awesome sight it was. Every time we were mentioning programming as they were prepping us to speak, they were just like, what? Your schools offer what? You have what? You give them this? And so it was just a testament to, they go around, right? They go around town, and they're all over Los Angeles, and they see lots of schools, and they see lots of buildings. And they just, those crews just kind of couldn't believe how awesome our schools were and all the things that we're offering. And I'm just so proud that we're able to do these things for our families. So thank you for inviting me to that. That was a lot of fun. And thank you to everybody who was there early, also interviewing and prepping things to get those interviews out and done and turning on the lights for the classrooms, like getting everything ready for that. I know it's a lot of extra work, so I want to give a shout out to Principal Schumate for helping out with that as well, and her staff. And then just, I want to thank everybody also who was out there canvassing our neighborhoods for Start Smart. I know it's not an easy feat to be walking in the neighborhoods in the heat, but I think it really helps, so I really do appreciate that investment. I did end up with a door hanger on my door, so they were in my neighborhood too, so, right? So we're out there trying to get the message that we're starting school and how we're going to start and make things happen for our families. So thank you to everyone who invested in that. Also, just want to welcome everybody back to a new school year. Also, just kind of put it out there that this board is completely open to any communication and engagement with anyone, parents, community, right? We're here to listen, and we're here to help. And we just are excited to welcome you back for another school year as we get things moving for another year and getting things done, right? So appreciate everybody for their efforts and their energy and their investment in this district. So that concludes my report. All right, so let's move on to future agenda items. Do you have any agenda items? There are none? Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn. Let's adjourn this meeting at 7:19. Next meeting will be September 14th.